So what did you do during spring break?
I can do a whole lot around here.
Yeah?
I was going to Texas to see my grandkids, but they were working.
It's time, isn't it?
They were working?
Yeah. It's time to call to order the regular meeting in McAllister City Council Tuesday, March 26th. We do have a quorum to ask Pastor Roy Prince if he would come and lead from Northgate Baptist Church, if he would come lead us in the invocation and pledge.
Let's pray together, please. Father, we thank you for your grace, your goodness, the love that you've given us through your son Christ. And Lord, I pray that you'd help these men tonight, give them wisdom from heaven to make the decisions that are honoring and pleasing to you. I pray that you would help us to continue on as a city that is well-pleasing. Thank you, Lord, for what you've done for us. Thank you for your protection. Thank you for our men and women in the law enforcement and fire and other areas, Lord, that are a blessing to us. And I pray your blessing and safety on their lives. So meet with us tonight, Lord, and bless these men. And we ask this in the name of Christ. Amen. Let's stay our pledge, please. Attention. Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. God bless you.
Thank you. Corr, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
Here. Citizens, we're onto citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Residents may address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda. Residents must provide their name and address. Council requests that comments be limited to five minutes. We do have three sign-ups. Dolores, Dolores Smith and Rowena McElroy. I think you guys are going to be together on this, aren't you? Okay, so if you guys step to the microphone, we'd be like to hear from you.
I'm Dolores Smith. I'm the director of fly-by summer program for kids. This is our fifth year. We run about 58 kids a day during the summer. Our program lasts eight weeks. Our doors open from 7:30 in the morning to 3 o'clock in the afternoon. We give them free breakfast, free lunch and free snacks, so.
We need a bigger building. So we're trying, because on Thursday, Fridays and Saturday, she has a garage sale. She has to take it out of the building, bring it back in the building. So the United Way building is empty. We've been trying for four months to see who owns that building. And still, we haven't got no answer who owns the building over there. Because we don't have a United Way here. So we want to know if the city would help us. If we can't get that building, to try to get a building so we can, you know, have a summer program for the kids. Because a lot of parents cannot afford daycare. And I'm a daycare provider, so I know.
Because of this being a non-agenda item, we can't, we can't discuss back and forth with you on this. But I can give you some information. I checked with who I thought owned the building and they said that they didn't. They did say it was owned by a trust. They didn't say whose trust it was. And I think that the city would still be interested in talking to you about the, using part of the Armory building.
Would the city help fix it up?
Well, so we can't really get into, I can just give you information. I can't, we can't make it as if it's an agenda item. So I would suggest contacting the city manager.
If you would contact me tomorrow morning, I've got some other ideas also, but I need to know exactly what your plans are. And there might be a short-term opportunity, I don't know, but we need to sit down and talk. That building, and here again, it's just comments, that building at the Armory. I mean, we've all seen it. The ceiling's out of it. There's no air conditioning. Basically, it's got new windows in it. It needs flooring. It's, it's a mess. And to be able to put that thing together quickly would be virtually impossible, plus a tremendous amount of money. So why don't you come see me tomorrow? Give me a call and we'll talk about maybe some other opportunities.
Thank you. I do have one other person signed up. I think he's probably going to want to be on the agenda item itself. Yeah, okay. In that case, we will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda. It will be considered separately. The agenda tonight consists of A, approval of minutes, or excuse me, approval of claims from March 6, 2019 through March 19, 2019. B, consider and act upon a request by Bobby Leonardo on behalf of the Italian Festival Committee to partner with them for the rental fee for the use of McAllister Expo Center for the 49th Annual McAllister Italian Festival set for May 9th, 10th, 11th, 2019 in the amount of $2,125. C, consider and act upon a request from Larry Amos, member of the Pittsburgh County Powwow Committee, to partner with them for the rental fee for the use of the McAllister Expo Center for the 2019 Pittsburgh County Powwow set for April 27, 2019 in the amount of $900. D, consider and act upon approval of a resolution to extend the term of the cable television permit with Vibe Broadband Limited Liability Corporation. E, consider and act upon a resolution of the City of McAllister in support of permanent eastbound and westbound traffic across the Wade Watts Underpass. F, concur with mayor's reappointments of Mark Emmons, Chris Taylor and Susan Kennard to the McAllister Board of Adjustments for Terms ending March 31, 2022. G, consider and act upon approving the expenditure of interest monies from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund for Oak Hill Cemetery for the purchase of a sprayer. Would anyone like anything removed?
D.
D?
Lockback Cable.
Anything else?
B, C and E, please.
E?
Yes.
Anyone else? In that case, they'll take a motion in a second to approve items A, F and G. Motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Smith. Any discussion? Corr, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Councilman Brown, item D.
Yes, sir. And I know we've talked about this before, but are we big enough, I know I'm rehashing this, to have another cable service? Because some people may not just want to just, you're kind of locked in. One cable service, you gotta pay whatever. And there's no competition. And that's just my opinion, and I've had people ask me about it.
For another cable service to come in, they would have to put, either buy the infrastructure from Vibe or else put in whole new infrastructure, which would be a tremendous initial cost. So I would be very surprised if we had, if we could give them enough customers to do that. There is, you know, there's always Dish, there's DirecTV and there's
Oh, yeah.
cutting the cord.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's Hulu, there's all kinds of, there's Apple TV, there's a number of opportunities out there anymore.
Yeah, I've had people ask me about it. Not a lot, but so I just concern.
Vice President Stevens?
Remind me again why we keep renewing this? If you don't mind, I know that we talked, I know I asked, I'm pretty sure I asked the same question last time. I was going to say, and I've forgotten, and I apologize.
Well, I really did not intend to negotiate the agreement. I reviewed the agreement they sent us. I redid it and resent it to them. We have no agreement. They don't agree with what I sent them. They, I didn't agree with what they sent, sent us. We keep blowing by these extensions. At this point, in, to Mr. Brown's point, we have now solicited contracts from other communities. Much to my surprise, Durant has Cox as their provider. I think we've come up with three other providers among the communities that we, two communities have the same one, Mollie and Muskogee, I think, have one cable or something like that. And Broken Arrow has, I think they have Cox also. But anyway, I was going to contact those people and see if there is any competition, if anybody would be interested in it, to see if we can get off the dime. And right now, I think all, all Vibe is doing is asking us to extend the agreement so if we can get together and discuss the differences. But the main difference, I think, is the entities in our community and even some outside the community that are now receiving free service under the present agreement.
And Vibe doesn't want to do that anymore.
They say they can't because there is a, and it's mostly controlled by FCC. But they say that FCC has now determined that they can't provide free service, that they can provide in-kind service, which is a deduction from the amount that we can charge for them providing the service. So, but that turned out to be a temporary regulation. It's not a permanent regulation. And so, because Oklahoma City has that free service in theirs and their agreement was negotiated in 17.
Okay.
So we've got, that was one of the things we put in the version we sent them. We said they'll provide free service until they cannot provide free service. And they're not agreeable to do that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Councilman Smith?
Who gets free service? Can I get it?
All the city buildings.
There's a number of schools.
Two schools outside, outside of our city boundary that receive free service. But it's mainly educational and city services.
Thanks.
And I'm assuming we will have to pay for that if we don't come up with something different.
Anyone else? Take a motion in a second to approve item D. Motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Reed. Any further discussion? Corr, do you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Stevens?
No.
Brown?
No.
Richard?
No.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion does not carry. We will move on to, Councilman Richard, B, C or E?
I can take, I can do B and C together. I know we have this policy to partner. We have the $15,000 in the budget. And we've approved some earlier this year, mostly for educational purposes. For these two events and similar events, I would really like to see the staff or the person requesting the partnership prepare some sort of economic impact analysis. In the letter that I've sent in for the Italian Festival by Mr. Leonardo, he, you know, mentions the economic impact, but doesn't really go into much detail. I think most members of the council know that I am not a fan of the operating deficit at the Expo Center. And so I would really like to see the impact that these types of events are going to have on the city, that, you know, the city as an entity, and then also broader as a community, that, you know, the number of dollars are going to spend in the community and the benefit that provides this. So I would like to, as a policy going forward, when the staff presents one of these events for a partnership, to have a attached economic impact analysis.
Anyone else? Do you want to go ahead and address E now, or do you, would you want to vote on B and C first?
Well, I'd rather vote on
B and C first? Okay, in that case, do you make any kind of motion?
I don't have a motion, no.
If anyone could pass, I'm assuming. Motion to pass. Motion, Councilman Reed, second, Councilman Smith. Any further discussion? Corr, do you call the roll, please?
Is this for both B and C?
B and C, yes.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. Item E, Councilman Richard.
I just wanted a little more, I mean, I read the agenda packet. I'm familiar with the road, as I'm sure everyone is. But I just kind of wanted a little bit of background about why the, what's the need for this resolution?
Well, it has been, Councilman, it has been the goal of ODOT all along to make that underpass one-way and to make that entire highway one-way. This has been an ongoing conversation that we've been having with ODOT for a couple of years now. And we've actually looked at, if you came under the Wade Watts Court, Underpass, and going behind Tractor Supply Building Road over to our street, and I don't know the name of that street, but it ties back to that hotel back there. We've looked at that, that's a swamp back there, and it's about a million-dollar build to put a road back there. We've worked with the owner of Tractor Supply and Dollar General, that shop, little shopping center right there, and the owner of Kato's to look at possibly putting a road on the front part of his parking lot in order to keep that underpass open. It finally came down to Mr. E. Kelly and myself having a conversation a month or so ago. Because when Phase 2 is built, it'll have an overpass and then you'll have complete one-way circulation on those frontage roads, which would eliminate that ability to go under the Wade Watts and the 3,947 cars that average underneath that underpass, accessing the businesses on the west side. So anyway, it came down to, we looked at traffic, we looked at traffic plans, we looked at accidents. We're not seeing any accidents where that stop sign was installed there by Kato's. We're just not seeing any problems whatsoever. And it finally came down to, why do we care? And the bottom line is, is why do we care if it's not, if it's working, why do we care? And so with this resolution, passing this resolution, ODOT is agreeing to leave the system the way it is today.
If we pass this, they're going to leave the river?
Yes, sir.
Even after?
Even after Phase 2.
Okay.
Because we are not seeing any problems with what they've created down there.
Yeah, well, then I'll make a motion to approve this.
No second. Any further discussion? Corr, do you call the roll, please?
Councilman Richard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to a public hearing. All persons interested in any ordinance listed under scheduled business shall have an opportunity to be heard in accordance with Article 2, Section 212B of the city charter. We have two tonight. The first is an ordinance of the City of McAllister, Oklahoma, amending McAllister City Code, Chapter 62, Land Development, Planning, Zoning and Subdivisions, Article 4, Division 2, Section 62-297, Storage and Parking of Trailers and Commercial Vehicles, repealing all conflicting ordinances and providing for severability. The second is an ordinance of the City of McAllister, Oklahoma, amending ordinance number 2626, which established the budget for fiscal year 2018-19, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for severability clause and declaring it an emergency. Take a motion in a second to open the public hearing. Motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Reed. Any discussion? Corr, do you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and we are now in a public hearing. Anyone that would like to address these two ordinances at this time, approach? Seeing no one, I take a motion in a second to close. Motion, Councilman Smith, second, Councilman Reed. Any discussion? Corr, do you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We'll move on to agenda item number one, consideration and action to authorize the execution of lease agreements with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for the development of a cellular tower north of Mullins Park in lots 5 and 6, Glock 94, North McAllister, City of McAllister, including an access utility easement. Ms. Clinton?
Good evening, council. This is appearing back on the agenda from a previous meeting. And I've had time to visit with Mr. Troy Williams with France Communications, of which I've been working with through this entire project. And he's here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. The sheet going around to you is the proposed wording that is recommended to go into the contract based on the input of the council at the last meeting. I think this addresses Councilman Stevens' question about the sublease and then also the reserved area for the city telecommunications. And the request is to approve the contract with those recommended changes to the contract.
Councilman Reed?
Jamie, on the, putting the equipment on there, is this at no cost to the city?
Yes.
It doesn't, it doesn't, where's it at?
Mr. Williams?
It doesn't say that. Is, is that the intent?
Yeah, that's the intent. The city would be allowed to put your antennas on the tower between that red center?
In that space.
In that space and equipment on the ground in the six by six. It's bigger, I just, we just need to know.
No cost to the city?
Yeah, no cost to the city, yes.
Okay.
No rent.
Right.
I didn't know Mr. Urban hadn't seen the law.
Well, I did. I was questioning with Mr. Reed, the heading, it says option to lease.
That's, I'm sorry, that's the heading in the lease in the agreement.
Okay.
It just
But it's a grant?
It's
It does say tenant grants?
Yes.
Okay.
That was the wording in the previous contract that we did over on South Street. I just pulled it directly from there, verbatim.
And if you need me to change that, sir, just tell me at all.
I do have a question later, but
Yes, sir.
I'll ask permission.
Okay.
I have a question for Mr. Stasiak. This, assuming this were to pass tonight, this money that we would have coming in, it adds up to, looks like quite a bit of money, about what, $300,000, close to $300,000?
It'll be paid out over the
Over a number of years, true. But do we have, do we have any kind of earmark as to what we would use that money for?
Well, what we've done in the past, Mayor, with the cell tower down on South Street is we've utilized those funds for park improvement. And that's what we intend to do with this money also.
So this, we have an agenda item later in, in here about park equipment at Conley Park. So this would be, this would be money that would provide something like that, and maybe not necessarily that particular one, but
It is. Those are the type of items that we want to do improvements, quality of life for this community.
And this for all parks, and just, we have to pick and choose?
Well, we need, it would be, and it would all have to be approved.
Okay.
Anyone's, Vice President Stevens?
I have one question for Mr. Urban. Mr. Urban, in number 16 on the assignment slash sublease, I read what we have in here in the beginning, but there towards the end, I think it's about the third sentence from the end. It says, "Tenants shall have the right to sublease the premises in whole or in part without landlord's consent." And is that essentially what we talked about last time it was here?
You asked a question, I believe, that said it didn't provide for consent of the landlord to the assignment or the subletting.
Okay.
And I, I think this is their, this is your response, right, to
Yes, sir.
To, to allow the I didn't understand the last part of that. It says tenant may also, may not otherwise assign this agreement without landlord, landlord's consent, but landlord's consent not to be reasonably withheld. So that, that is
Right.
An answer to the
If they want to sublet on somebody, like the city, it's free. You won't need landlord consent because you are the, you're the city. But if, if we, somebody has less than the, you know, $20 million net worth, then we'd have to ask consent by the board to approve that.
So it, it does require the consent of the city, but it won't be recently withheld?
Yes.
Okay.
You said a board, you're talking to council or?
I'm sorry, council.
Okay.
Counsel, excuse me.
You.
Landlord. I, I had a question. In our telephone conversation, I asked about this business, about the extending the option. And I understood that you all agreed that that would be by mutual consent if it was extended, but
Not for the, well, what, what it was, it was 17, five-year renewals, and we
Well, no, not on the lease, but the option to lease.
Oh, the option. The option's only there for us to do all the third-party services, which a lot of them we've already kind of done, because we had to have it for this hearing, surveys. We haven't, I don't know if we've done the GO yet, but as soon as we get the billing permit, the option, we'll exercise the lease. So that gives us a year to exercise
There's no reason for the extension of the option then?
I hope not. I think we can get it done. I know this is a high-priority site and it's high priority for the city as well as AT&amp;T. So we're going to be doing, as soon as I have this approval, I'll have the plans. I'll file the, file everything with the billing permit.
Okay, but right now, the way the, the lease is written, it doesn't require our consent to the extension of the option. It's a one-year option, right?
It's a, it's a one-year option, I believe.
And then a, an extension of one year if that's required with an additional payment?
That's all, you're approving all of that.
So it doesn't go beyond two years?
No, sir.
In any event?
And we're going to try to do everything we can to go faster.
I would also, if I could ask the chair, there were several other, after you and I talked on the phone, there were several other changes that, or I think came up after we finished our review. And I don't know if I'm unable to follow with those changes. Now, I knew you took out all the stuff about indemnification.
Yes, sir. I changed, I only made the changes you requested. And I know once you take out the red, it's only the, you only saw the black line. I thought I provided, did I not provide?
Well, that, that, my problem is everything's in black. So I don't, I don't know what got taken out and what didn't get out.
I removed everything you asked me to remove and I inserted everything that you asked me to insert.
Okay.
And I sent that as a red line to AT&amp;T. They blacklined it, sent it to me and say, okay.
Okay.
And they would have told me of anything that changes, which I, I've checked.
Well, I, I think we're fine.
Yes, sir. Councilman Richard?
I'm questioning for staff about the zoning here. So the zoning is R1B, I believe. Which of the six permitted uses in R1B does this cell phone tower fall into?
It's not in the zoning code. It's in Chapter 100, telecommunications. And there's not a specified zoning that's required for those telecommunications towers to locate.
Because of the city property.
So is your contention that Section 100, what is it, 152, I believe? Or is it your contention that that nullifies the underlying zoning?
No, it's, I don't think that it nullifies the zoning. It's the fact that it's located on city property and it's outlined in Chapter 100.
If it doesn't nullify the underlying zoning, don't we have to apply the zoning ordinance?
I don't agree with you that it nullifies the zoning.
I agree that, do you think it nullifies the zoning?
No.
Then why are you not applying the zoning ordinance?
Because I'm following Chapter 100 for telecommunications. It doesn't specify what, where these are located at. It, it does not specify the zoning, I mean.
Right, but, well, let me ask this. Do you agree that the R1B zoning ordinance creates six uses that are permitted in the zoning, in that zoning? Do you agree with that?
I am. We are following Chapter 100. I, I don't know what else we'd follow at this point. Talks about city property.
When the lot is zoned, R1B residential, all the surrounding lots are zoned R1B residential. And it's not clear, it's actually, it's very clear to me that the cell phone tower is not a use permitted in R1B residential.
The difference is the property is owned by city property, and city property is exempt.
From what, from the zoning?
From any zoning, yes.
What ordinance says that?
Section 100.
I don't, I mean, I don't believe that Section 100 of, says that. I may be wrong, but
This is if I may.
Yeah, let me ask you a question real quick. Yeah, let me ask you a question real quick. Is there any zoning that a lot, that mentions, uh, cell towers?
Not, not to my knowledge. I mean, I, I don't have the code book in front of me. I mean.
But as, as our resident expert, you're qualified to say it would be.
When, when it's telecommunications.
Said, then wouldn't the telecommunications, uh, ordinance override anything else on this?
I, I believe so. I mean, that's what we follow is the chapter one hundred specific, specifically for telecommunications towers. I mean, anytime, any antenna cellular tower or anything like that locates in City McAllister, this is what we follow. So.
I mean, I.
There's not any zoning, um, requirements for utilities. And I mean, it, it kind of falls under the same, you know, there's, it, even utilities are not specified in the zoning code.
Well, I don't agree that, uh, how tall is this structure? Hundred ninety feet?
Hundred ninety-five, yes.
I don't agree that that is the same thing as a utility. And additionally, well, I'll ask a question. If I own this lot, if a private citizen owned this lot, would you let me build a cell phone tower there?
As long as it met all the requirements of chapter one hundred.
Okay. Um, I really think we need a legal opinion on chapter one hundred because it's not, it's not clear to me from the reading of the statute or the ordinance rather, that, um, that we still don't have to provide notice. I mean, if you read one hundred, it's at the end of this ordinance, um, one hundred fifty-nine under permit approval process. That section, section A allows for public notification affecting, I think it's three hundred feet or three hundred feet boundary. I don't believe we provided that notice. Um, and it's not clear to me at all, again, from reading this ordinance, that the city, even though they own the property, doesn't have to provide the notification.
If you look at section one hundred fifty-three, permit required, telecommunications facility shall be regulated and permitted pursuant to this article. And in paragraph two, it then says in paragraph C or paragraph two, it says shall apply to all towers and, and antennas as defined except, and then go to paragraph C, a telecommunications facility located or co- like, co-located on property which is owned by the city and designated, designated by the city as a site suitable for location.
Yes, I, I read that ordinance too.
So the entire article is exempt from this because it is located on city property.
That is what I think that we need to have a legal opinion about because it is not clear to me when it says these regulations, what regulations specifically it is referring to, if it is, it's, it's just not clear to me what regulations we as a city are exempt from under this ordinance. And further, I'll say, just as a policy perspective, I think it's pretty clear why this ordinance was put in place and the city is advocating we go exactly against the policy behind this ordinance. I mean, this cell phone tower is going to be within a few hundred feet, maybe less, of two houses and a public park, a park that we, this city council advocated for building a large splash pad facility at. So there are some safety concerns with having these devices or these structures so close to parks, to homes. The ordinance addresses those. There's also some aesthetic problems. I know that if I lived right there, and I think everybody else on this council, they would be very upset to have a hundred and ninety-foot metal structure in their backyard where once was a field overlooking a park. I feel like we are selling these two property owners out for whatever benefit we think this is providing.
The, the cell phone site is also a first net site, which is for first responders. It has a dedicated bandwidth for first responders and cellular data and broadband Wi-Fi. But it, the, the safety part is for first responders of McAllister to be able to use a dedicated system so they won't be blocked or interrupted. And we're also adding it to the other sites that we have.
Look, I'm not here to argue this cell phone tower isn't going to provide utility, isn't going to potentially increase, uh, the effectiveness of emergency communications. It clearly is. And if you read the ordinance that we have on point or most directly on point, it certainly, uh, grapples with these challenges. But all that being said, you cannot look, you cannot overlook the fact that we are going to locate this on or adjacent to a park, a few hundred feet and a few hundred feet from some people's backyard, which again, the ordinance, I mean, the ordinance is pretty clear that this was not the intent of.
How many, uh, how many cell towers do we have in McAllister?
Oh, yeah, I have no idea.
Ballparks, well, have they all been, uh, done under, uh, one hundred? The, the ordinance that you, that you, the telecommunications.
Since I've been here, yes.
Mayor, the cell tower down on south is on city property and we followed ordinance one hundred and that was at the advice of the former city count, city attorney. And that's how we put that, that cell tower down there.
Yeah, there was multiple sites selected during this process. Meeting with staff and Peter and everybody. It was, we were trying to put it on the city park. There was a couple of different locations in the city park and we moved it up to the area where it's not utilized by the park. That's why we put it there. And the gentleman that's lived in the house that mows the lawn was out there when we were surveying.
This, this will also, uh, aid us in our, our safety, our tele, our communications with our police and fire and probably I'm assuming the county and highway patrols, all of that. So there's a, there's a, a definite benefit to the city for putting this in.
Yes.
Aside from the monetary group, the amount that we're going, getting, there's a, we are getting. We're going to profit from it.
Well, it's, it's approximately three hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars for the entire thirty-year package.
Yeah.
The lot.
It also though.
Yes.
It provides a service to us and it enhances a service that we currently have.
Answers, yes. E nine one one for everybody in the area as well.
And there was other locations that were considered. However, this one, um, the lot where it's going, uh, it actually drops twelve feet. Um, the topography on the lot makes it difficult to develop. Um, I had checked with area realtors and, um, you know, a, a lot in that area of town, maybe ten thousand. Um, there's lots, but this one not being build ready. I mean, if there's trees on it, the topography is difficult to develop. There's not road frontage. And, and, you know, maybe four or five thousand dollars. I mean, this is, uh, it seemed like a win-win, you know, for the city to, you know, gain something here and to be able to help the public and do something with the lot that otherwise would not be utilized.
Sounds like that to me too. Council Brown.
Yes, sir. I was just going to mention since this came up, what about the liability? Will the liability be on the city or would it be on eight, well, sing, AT&amp;D?
Yes, sir. And that's, was put in the agreement under.
I mean, it's probably, I don't see.
Yeah, yes, sir. It's, it's quite thick.
Okay.
The, uh, city is a, an additional sure on the property. You don't invite somebody out there and they crawl up the tower or something that's on AT&amp;T.
Let's hope they don't crawl up.
Well, we have it. That's why we have it. We have it monitored too.
Yeah.
Mr. Stasiak, did you have something to add?
No, I just had to comment about the south tower.
Anyone else? Any further comments, questions? Take a motion and a second to approve. Motion, Council Smith, second, Council Reed. Uh, any further discussion? Corrige, call her all, please.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Stevens?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
No.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. Thank you. We're on to agenda item number two. Consider an act upon an ordinance amending McAllister City Code, Chapter sixty-two, land development, planning, zoning and subdivisions, Article four, Division two, Section six two dash two nine five, storage and parking of trailers and commercial vehicles, repealing all conflicting ordinances and providing for separability. Ms. Clinton.
Hello again. Uh, this is, um, this, it is a recommendation of staff, um, to approve the amendments to section sixty-two, two ninety-seven concerning storage and parking of the trailers. Um, this has been a concern and a difficult, um, code to enforce with code enforcement. And, you know, looking at the safety hazards, um, you know, when they're hooked up to electrical water and sometimes, um, they're going into the sewer cleanouts. And so, um, the, the code as it is written is very difficult to enforce because it's not clear in some areas. Um, we have to kind of chase around some codes in different areas of our ordinances to be able to enforce this. So that was the reason why, um, we brought it to the planning commission in October of two thousand and eighteen. Uh, we had tabled it a number of times, brought it back. The planning commission had reviewed it several times. And then, um, at the last meeting on March fourteenth, they did unanimously, uh, approve this draft with some other changes and those changes are included in here for your review. Um, I do have Tabitha Howler, code enforcement officer here to answer any questions that you may have, but we do request that you approve this.
Councilman Reed.
Jamie, why did we change the length of the trailers from twenty-four feet to thirty-one feet or thirty-five feet?
They just, really, there's a lot of trailers out there that just do not meet that length anymore. So we updated it to a more current, um, length of travel trailers, uh, utility trailers that are out there. We've seen a lot of, um, motorhomes, RVs, uh, that are much longer, uh, makes very difficult, you know, um, I mean, we don't want to prohibit people from living in city limits. I mean, a lot of people like recreation. They enjoy camping and taking ATVs out, stuff like that. So we're trying to bring this code up to date and it, it has not been amended, um, in some time.
Well, this, this applies to people who want to park them on the side of their house too, right?
In the side yard, yes.
Even, even though we're extending thirty-five feet, they'd still have to do that?
Yes. Yeah, the only difference will be, um, they have to be within six feet of the front building line. So if it protrudes beyond that front building line, they've got a little bit more leeway because some people can't get it all the way back into.
So that's your ten feet. The extra ten feet is what's poking out around the corner.
Sometimes, yes. Um, but we do ensure that they meet like the site triangle, that they're not creating, you know, traffic hazards and make sure that they're parked back appropriately.
Is there a time limit on how long they could park it in the driveway?
Um, I believe it's forty-eight hours. We put that back in there. Um.
How do you, how do you measure that? I mean, how, how, how are you going to enforce that?
We just document, um, with pictures, um, and then we just go back and check it back another forty-eight hours.
So if you, if it's parked there this evening and they say, well, I moved it yesterday evening, but now I'm back again. Is that, i- if there's a break in time there, do you, do you have to be able to prove that, that they didn't, didn't move it?
I think we can mark the tires too, you know, um, mark the tires and photographs. But yeah, it's just going back and following up on those, you know, those complaints or code violations. It's the nature of the job.
It doesn't change street parking, right?
No, it does not change that. So it has to be like in the side yard, the backyard, um, enclosed, you know, n- not in the street, so.
Okay, does it change the number of trailers that they can have?
Yes, they can have one travel trailer and then up to two of the other types of trailers, like utility trailers, boat trailers, mower trailers, you know, any of those other trailers. It's common that we see multiple trailers and it's not just one area of town. It's all over. So it's all over McAllister. So trying to accommodate that as well because, you know, most people before it was only one trailer and that's kind of difficult to do as well.
Councilman Brown.
Ms. Clinton, are people able to live in these trailers if they're in their yard?
No, sir.
Okay, because I, I did get a call one time about that.
Yes.
So that, that's doors closed on that deal now.
That's correct. Um, some of the travel trailers are not designed, uh, to be inhabited for long term. Um, it just depends on the manufacturer. So it depends on each particular trailer. But, um, that kind of turns it to an issue of, you know, your space requirements and open space and stuff like that. And also, um, if they are hooked up to electricity, you want to make sure that they're hooked up appropriately. Code enforcement encountered one today that was hooked up with an extension cord into a power strip. So, um, there's, yeah, there's a lot of dangers there that we're trying to prevent.
Okay, thank you.
Just one, one question. Currently, you cannot, uh, you can't not have a RV park, a trailer quarry or a mobile home park within city. And that's correct.
I, I know that there is one trailer park.
It's grandfathered though. I mean, you can't, couldn't put one in now.
I believe you could.
You could.
Yes.
Okay.
But it has to go through the appropriate channels and for that to be approved and, um, and to be developed appropriately, you know, to accommodate the trailers.
Okay, great. As I was questioning part of that, they said that they had to be parked there and I thought, well, you can't park there if you can't have them there. And any other questions, comments? Take a motion and a second. Motion, Council Smith. Second, Council Reed. Uh, any further discussion? Corrige, call her all, please.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Smith, Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Clinton. We're on to agenda item number three. Consider an act upon accepting a bid amount of two hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred twenty-four dollars for section A, twenty eighteen, C D B G sewer improvements and two hundred thousand, two hundred, two thousand, eight hundred eight dollars for section B for Conley addition sewer improvements by city infrastructure funds, uh, for a total combined bid amount of four hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars from Built Right Construction LLC and authorize the mayor to sign the notice of award and grantee the barment review and certification. Haven't seen the word before.
Well, that was a mouthful. Mayor, council, it's a pleasure to be back, uh, in front of you tonight. Uh, last Tuesday, bids were received. Um, five contractors had picked up plans for this project and three contractors elected to submit a bid. Uh, one of the bids received was incomplete, didn't have the bid security with it and had the wrong bidding documents. So it was an unresponsive bid. Uh, the other two bidders were, uh, complete and the lowest responsive bidder was a Built Right Construction, uh, which is our recommendation.
Any questions, comments?
I have a question.
Yes, Vice Mayor Stevens?
Um, just looking on here, Built Rights, not the, not the cheapest bid. It was Bates Instrumentation.
And that's what the bid that we received from Bates Instrumentation, we got back and reviewed everything that was received, that they didn't have a complete bid packet.
Okay, is that the one?
That is the one that did not, was non-responsive, didn't have a bid security. Um, it was an invalid bid.
Okay.
Sure.
Anyone else? Take a motion and a second. Motion, Vice Mayor Stevens, second, Council Smith. Any further discussion? Corrige, call her all, please.
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number four. Consider an act upon a proposal from Noah's Park Playground at the amount of sixty-two thousand dollars for the purchase of playground equipment for Conley Park. Mr. Pretty.
Mayor, council, uh, staff has recommended that we accept the proposal from Noah's Park and Playground, Oklahoma City. There were fifteen different proposals submitted from eight different companies and, uh, we felt like this gave us the best bang for the buck. Thirty-one different playstations and, uh, that also includes the, uh, ground cover, which is engineered wood fiber and the border wall, the plastic border wall around the playground. So it felt like it's a good proposal. Now, what it didn't include was the amenities that go around the playground, the benches, uh, decorative trash receptacle, and we need a handicap, uh, sidewalk from the parking lot. But, uh, one of our longtime park benefactors has stepped up and agreed to donate the money for all the amenities, Mr. Bob Sonier. He's been very good to the park for several years and he's agreed to help us out again. So, uh, he'll pay for all the rest of the things we need to complete that.
Fantastic. Any, uh, Council?
The lower, the better the government includes as much as this, I've seen.
Exactly. In our opinion. Yeah. If anybody sees Mr. Sonier, be sure and thank him for once again helping out the park department.
Have a councilman that might run across him.
I think so. I think he might. I tell you, my team and, uh, he'll be sure and thank you, I'm sure. Okay. It's called engineered wood fiber, kind of like a mulch. No, I still have it. It's very expensive. The rubber's very expensive. Were you saying for years, which was cheap? No, no. It's, it's approved. Oh, she approved.
Any other questions or comment?
All-inclusive playground, yeah. For ages five to the twelfth.
Any other questions or comments? Take a motion and a second. Motion, Vice Mayor Stevens, second, Council Reed. Any further discussion? Corrige, call her all, please.
Vice Mayor Stevens?
Yes.
Councilman Reed? Council Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Preacher?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Pretty. We're on to agenda item number five, consider an act upon an ordinance amendment, ordinance number two-six-two-six, which established the budget for fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen, repealing all conflicting ordinances provided for severability clause and declaring an emergency.
Mayor, councilman, this is uh, today we have two uh, budget amendment. It's all related to two thousand eighteen CDBG uh, frame project, the Suren Light Project. And is the first one, this excepted A twenty-nine, is transferred from the MPWA to the, the, it's uh, increases uh, CDBG revenue and expense and the expect, the revenue is from the, we transfer from the uh, MPWA. So that is a expect, exact big eight thirty. And the amount is a hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred thirty-two dollars.
Any questions?
So what's on eight thirty? Where are you getting the money?
This is from the, from the, from the uh, MPWA.
That would say twenty-nine.
The eight twenty, the eight twenty-nine is we increase the, the, the revenue and expense from this uh, CDBG fund. And eight thirty is the one that we transfer from the uh, MPWA to the uh, CDBG.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, Councilman Preacher?
Question would drum.
Anybody else? Take a motion in a second, approve, with Council Reed. Second, Councilman Smith, any further discussion, Corge caller, please.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Preacher?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number six, discussion and update. Oh, I'm sorry, there's an emergency with that. So take a motion in a second on the emergency, motion Council Reed, second Councilman Smith, uh, any discussion, Corge caller, please.
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Preacher?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. Now we're on to agenda item number six, discussion and update on financials.
This is February uh, our financial and the percentage completed for the, this year uh, year today is sixty-six percent, sixty-six seventy-seven percent. And you can see the first one is for the general fund and our revenue is eight, sixty-eight percent, sixty-eight forty-six percent. And our expense is sixty-three point ten percent. So revenue a little bit higher and the, our expenditure is uh, lower than what we expect. And the balance, the fund balance will be one million one hundred eighty-two thousand one seventy-four. And the MPWA uh, our revenue is sixty-five seventy-nine, is a little bit lower than what we expect. But the expenses of the lower is sixty-two ninety percent. And the fund balance is seven hundred fifty-nine thousand nine hundred thirty-four. In the next page is our sales tax revenue. And this month, the March is a little bit low, but that is kind of like, I think it's.
It's expected.
Yes. Yes.
March is a cool summer.
Happy birthday.
I think it's supposed to be April, but that's.
And the next page is your U-Tex, use tax chart.
Still continuing the trend upward, isn't it?
It is.
Well, I think, yes, I think so. And, and the next page is our MPWA uh, revenue, it's both a residential and a district and wholesale revenue.
On the, on the MPWA revenue, uh, you know, on the, we're a little bit, we're a little bit behind this year. It is that, because that, that, that revenue tends to be more peaks and valleys because of water sales, I would guess. And that, as, as the weather warms up, we can actually probably catch up where we're behind.
Yes, I hope so, yes.
Mayor, what we, that's a great question because what we look at is a five-year rolling average month by month, and that's how we adjust our budget and, and estimate our revenues on a monthly basis.
Anyone have any questions?
And the last page is our cash, well, I can say cashing in our bank. Yeah.
Which we need all the, all the requirements.
I've never heard that before. We, we may be under attack. Anyone have any questions on the financials? Thank you very much.
We'll be buying a new siren tomorrow.
We are now on to new business, any matter not known or which cannot have been recently foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda in accordance with section three-one-one-point-nine, title twenty-five, Oklahoma State statutes.
We do not, Mayor.
In that case, we will move to city manager's report.
Uh, today, uh, we moved our E-nine-one-one dispatch over to the uh, federal building and everything went very, very well. Um, we now have two stations that are up and running at the federal building. We still have one station here at city hall that we have to re, that has to stay up until April the eighth, April the eighth, uh, the state will be coming in and they're the only ones that can move that, that computer. It's tied to our OLEDs and so they'll, we will have two stations operating over there. One station operating here and then on April the eighth, we'll move that final computer. So that's gone very, very well. That was a big move today. Huge, and we had no glitches whatsoever. The IT, AT&T, Muskogee Communications, everybody worked side by side and got this accomplished today and it was, it was really great to see. Last week, police and uh, police administration uh, moved into the facility. Our understanding is, is everybody is enjoying the extra space, uh, the facilities, just the uh, the whole area. Courts will not be moving. Uh, it was our intent to move courts this week. Uh, we had to get some approvals from the National Historical Society. Uh, those approvals have been, have been received. We need to do a little bit of construction for that, that's, that area for the courts. And they'll probably be over there in the, the next week to two weeks. So that'll be the last move and the last uh, group heading in that direction. We'll look at uh, April, towards the end of April, first part of May, about having some open houses for the general public and be able to show off the facility after everybody gets settled. Uh, the shopping center, it's always been a big question. Uh, we have been in contact with the developer of the shopping center. He has informed us that uh, they intend to have the financing closed on that by the end of April. And then at that point, they will be start, start issuing contracts to start constructing that. Got a call from ODOT two days ago and uh, if you've traveled the bridge on two-seventy from A Street to uh, Main Street coming into town, it's like a washboard and it's full of holes and it's got all kinds of problems. Next Tuesday, uh, they're going to be closing the westbound bridge lanes and they're going to be resurfacing uh, the westbound lanes. During that time, which is going to take most of the day, there will be intermittent periods where the intersection at Main and two-seventy will also be closed. So our police department will be assisting ODOT in redirecting traffic. We uh, I don't think they've determined whether or not they're going to send truck traffic down electric or how they're going to reroute that traffic, but those details are being worked out right now, but the plan is to have that thing overlaid next Tuesday. On our CIP, as you're aware, we, we presented that at the last meeting. We did not get a uh, meeting notice put in the newspaper, so we're going to be required, I hate doing this, but we're going to have, be required to have a special meeting on Thursday, April the eleventh at five-thirty and we'll be putting out those meeting notices uh, so that we can get your feedback on the CIP and make any changes or recommendations that you have. Mayor, that's all I have.
We'll move on to remarks and inquiries by the city council, council Smith, vice mayor Stevens.
One question, Pete, and I know we've talked briefly about this before and it kind of got brought up a little bit at the very beginning of the meeting about the expo center.
Yes.
Have we ever done an impact study to see what actually comes into our community?
We have not, and that would require a third party to be able to put that analysis together and that's, if that's something that this council would like to see, uh, we'd be more than happy to fi- find, find the consultants that could put together a professional impact study for us.
And this is just out of curiosity because you've dealt with this more than I have. If we did something like that, is there a way that we could partner it along with in doing and saying, here, here's what it is and if it's a great benefit and we can see that in the study, wonderful, then we keep supporting it, growing it? Or if it has in there some other alternatives that maybe would allow tourism to do some other added things, is there, would that be along in a study like that?
Some recommendations on what to bring into our community. I think we're already doing that and I think we're very aggressive. We're working with other expos, other cities, other organizations and always questioning what they're doing, what are they doing differently than what we're doing? And a lot of it boils down to being able to piggyback off of each other. I know that there is a big push for us to work with, very closely with Durant and the Choctaw Nation and to be able to piggyback on some of their events that they have, that they bring in. Uh, because a lot of these bands and performers and everything like to stay in-state when they're here and just kind of make a routine. We saw that when we went to Enid and talked to Enid about their expo center and what they've seen that's been a success up there and what has been a failure for. A lot of it is piggybacking, so I think we're looking at that. I think um, we can definitely make that a, a part of it for recommendations from the consultant uh, for an impact study. But if that's something that the council would like for us to do, uh, we can get that done.
Okay. And, and to be clear, I have full faith in tourism and the people that we have there because I think they do an absolutely phenomenal job. I just have very little faith in the expo center at this point because I would say if it continues to lose this money, I'm assuming it's never lost less than three hundred thousand dollars in last ten years.
Councilman, I guess you have to look at the entire city and what we provide for the entire city and what you consider to be a loss because a lot of these things are quality of life. Our parks cost us a million dollars, they're a quality of life. Our nutrition program for seniors that only benefits a small group of people is going to cost the city three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars this year. Uh, these are all quality of life issues and I think when you start addressing those, uh, you almost have to start addressing everything. You know, it's really interesting, when I got into this business, and I'm digressing, it was quite evident what cities are required to provide is really five core factors and those are public safety, which is police and fire, water, sewer and streets. Everything else past that is an add-on and it's considered to be a quality of life. Our airport is a quality of life. It costs us a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars every year. Uh, you know, there are areas all over this city that cost a tremendous amount of money. But those are quality of life issues that we've tried to provide for.
And I, and I completely agree with you on that and I, and I, I would probably question the quality of life it does provide more than if it's a quality of life issue. It's not that it shouldn't be there, it's that maybe we could do it differently and do it better somewhere else. So that's, that's my whole point in saying that. I won't take up any more of the council's time. I'm just curious.
I absolutely agree with you. We are constantly looking at a better way to do things around here, always.
Councilree, Councilman Brown?
I just wanted to see some students here, you know, uh, if they'll stand. I don't know what school you guys are with, but is it college? Okay, go ahead and stand up there. Let's people see these young people participating in government. Very proud of you guys.
Uh, I have a few questions. Um, I think mostly for the city manager. Uh, Washington Avenue up there? I, I haven't asked you. We did some road repair, I believe. Washington east of Sixth Street? Am I on the wrong street?
No, Washington Sixth Street.
From Sixth Street, yeah.
What was the issue there? Because that's a pretty new road, wasn't it?
It was, uh, that was a warranty issue and there was some cracking that went on and so we had uh, them repair the base and, and fix the concrete.
So the.
That was all under warranty with Drake Construction.
Awesome. Um, another thing about that part of town, and you talked about the bridges earlier, um, I think all three of the bridges on Carl Albert are in the, the ODOT year plan.
They are.
Have you had conversations with them about that yet?
I have. Uh, they actually have a study going on all of the bridges here in the city of McAllister. And what they have requested from the engineers is to look at three different analysis on each bridge, especially on the, the bridge over the railroad tracks, which is repair, replace. Forgot what the third one is, but they're looking for all recommendations uh, from the engineers as to what to do to solve those problems.
I uh, I don't know what the ODOT's appetite is for public discourse, further public discourse in the city of McAllister, but I would, as much as possible, the council would love to be involved in, you know, those conversations as they move forward.
Once that information is received from the engineers and the consultants, I'm sure that they will have us involved in that.
Great. Um, how's Arvis Park going?
Slow. We got into some base problems. Uh, it's going slow. We will be out of the alley and probably removing curb and gutter here in the next day or two.
When do you, you have a new, not a new, but do you have a target completion date?
I don't. Um, we're probably thirty days from total completion. It's going to take two weeks to bust up the concrete, get it out along with three feet of soil and and bringing in three feet of new soil. Uh, that's what it has to, has to eventually occur. Uh, we are going to repair the curbing and the guttering and the sidewalks in the area. Uh, we've been in contact with PSO and this is, this is some good information. Uh, there's a large pole with a lot of weight on it right there on the corner, a wooden pole. And uh, PSO is going to replace that with a steel pole, which will also get rid of the guy wires uh, that are currently in the sidewalk.
Is that the one in the alley?
No, it's the one right on the corner.
Um, and I think this is my last one. When is the target date to begin the street skates on Choctaw? Do you have one?
Uh, it is out for bid right now. Um, I think the bids went out, it'll be two weeks this weekend. And I don't know what bid, what the date for the bids, bid opening is, but I would imagine it's in the next couple of weeks. Here's Robert Vaughn. I thought he left.
No, I stuck around, glad I did. Um, it's out for bids, scheduled, I don't remember the exact date. Um, it's going to be coming to the council second meeting in April for awarding. Um, construction start is scheduled or planned to be after the Armed Forces Day Parade, which is May fourth, I believe. So the week after that is whenever construction is starting, expected to be started. Um, we're expecting about four months of construction and there's two blocks and we're going to let them build one half block at a time. So there'll only be impact to one half block at any given time, but when they finish that half, then we'll, those, we'll skip to the next till we get it all complete. So we're not going to tear all of downtown at the same time, uh, but and there'll be barriers for pedestrians, so the businesses will all have full access. Every, every bit of the construction, maybe some inconvenient times, but they'll have access. Uh, parking obviously for that half block when it's under construction will be impacted. But any parades, any activities that are using the street will still be able to go on. Um, so that, that's the plan.
It's exciting.
It is.
I just got a couple of things. Uh, as far as going back to downtown, I've been getting a lot of questions from, from people downtown uh, about parking. There's, there's currently a two-hour limit on parking and that work, it, it's not being enforced, which some half the people are happy with, the other half aren't. Um, and so I, I have talked to McAllister Main Street and they're gonna, they are going to poll their members to see which the, what is, what the people down there would actually like to have. And then they're going to set up a meeting where uh, where we, chief and I and they all get together and see what we can come up with that'll work for everybody. Because at some places they have uh, they have events that last longer than two hours, other than other places. You know, just a lot, a lot of parking issues that can easily be fixed. We just got to get it, we just got to get it fixed and everyone, that works for everyone.
Mayor, I'd like to be a part of those discussions.
Okay. Okay, definitely. The other thing I have is last night, or last, yesterday afternoon, the, there was a candidate forum for the Fifth Ward council members or candidates. It was, had No Express Purpose and the Roastery, I nearly forgot the name. Put it on as, I want to thank them for doing that. They've done it for just every election we've had for the last, there are four times and it's a great public service. I recommend that anyone in Fifth Ward that's interested can see it either at No Express Purpose on Facebook or I think, I don't know if the city has it on there or not, but No Express Purpose does for sure. I want to congratulate both candidates, they did a great job. It's a remarkably hard thing to do if you haven't done it before. And they're, they're, they're both running very clean campaigns and I would commend them both for that. And April second is when the election is, so everybody, everybody that has a vote in this election, get out and vote. And there's, there's many throughout the county as well and I encourage everyone to get out and vote. That, we will recess the council meeting. And I would take a motion to convene as McAllister Airport Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from March twelfth, twenty nineteen, regular meeting, McAllister Airport Authority, confirm action taken on agenda item A and to adjourn.
Oh, my goodness.
Motion, Council Brown, second Council Smith. Any discussion? Corriged color roll, please.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Preacher?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. I'd now take a motion to convene as McAllister Public Works Authority. Motion to include approval of minutes from March twelfth, twenty nineteen, regular meeting with McAllister Public Works Authority. Confirm action taken on city council agenda item A, three, five, and to adjourn.
Motion, Council Brown, second Council Smith.
Any discussion? Corriged color roll, please.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Preacher?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. Now take a motion to convene as McAllister Retirement Trust Authority. Motion, motion to include approval of minutes from February twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, regular meeting in McAllister Retirement Trust Authority. Approval of retirement benefit payments for the period of March twenty nineteen and to adjourn.
Oh, my goodness.
Motion, Council Brown, second Council Preacher. Any discussion? Corriged color roll, please.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Preacher?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, and the motion carries. Now, now reconvene as the council, city council, I take a motion to adjourn. Motion, Council Smith. Second, Vice Mayor Stevens with a high, high second there. Any discussion? Corriged color roll, please.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Preacher?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, so we're adjourned, thank you, guys.
You guys need those signs? Do you guys all have copies?